Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Board of Education meeting. I will call on now Principal Greg Lyles to lead us in our pledge of allegiance and we'll stand for a moment of silence.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you. If I could now have a motion for the approval of our agenda?
(inaudible) Second?
It's been moved in second. We approve our agenda. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Ms. Mathis, communications?
Yes, Ms. Wade, did you wish to reorder the agenda by moving the school reports before our action items?
Yes ma'am, I would like to because I see that we have a guest in our audience tonight. And yes ma'am, I would like to do that. Thank you.
Just a few short communications for you all tonight, reminding you that T cap week in Murfreesboro City Schools will be April 13 through 17. And during that week, we'll provide bottled water and breakfast for every child. A little update for you for some of the things going on at Hobgood. Their students have raised $215 for the Pennies for Peace Program, $964 for Jump Rope for Heart, and the school will receive an additional $3,100 for their fresh fruit and vegetable program. And if you all haven't had a chance to go out and see that in operation, I would invite you to do so. Bradley, an update for you on them. Their 5th grade trip to Memphis has been sponsored by Doug Hughes of TRX Alliance. This is a tax refund express. He has donated $5,600 and then the teachers have raised $3,300. I know this will be a memorable time for our 5th graders going to Memphis. Mitchell Nelson Primary has received $8,500 from State Farm's Good Neighbor Grant Program. And the Community Foundation of Middle Tennessee has made field trip money available to three of our schools, Hobgood, John Pittard, and Mitchell Nelson Primary. Scales Elementary has received grants of $750 from Verizon and also a $500 award from State Farm. Casey Lane has received $900 from the Great Smoky Mountains Institute for their 6th graders. And something you're going to be learning quite a bit more about later, a $27,390 grant from the State Farm Youth Advisory Board. Tina Bailey, a teacher at Casey Lane, has written for that grant. There'll be a groundbreaking for an outdoor learning center. I know all of you will be invited and we will bring you a more lengthy update on that later. Wanted to let you know that we have a number of Daughters of the American Revolution first place winners. We've had a number of winners, but I'm only bringing to you tonight our first place winners. Discovery School 6th grader Marilyn Kelly, Nathan Seager, Asaf Asfa Mohammed, and Sarah Addison Smith are all students at Discovery School who won first place. And then at Scales, we had a 1st grader win first place, Emma Barch. And one person who's not on here, a John Pittard Elementary student who won first place, Barat Eric. And these students will now go on to compete in Southeast Regional Competition. We want to congratulate a teacher, 3rd grade teacher at the Discovery School, Teresa McCarthy has recently been named Teacher of the Month by the radio station WKDF. And a thanks to one of our board members, Nancy Duggan, has purchased bookmarks for all of our students in support of Read to Succeed's Literacy Matters. And one other item on the back, you'll see that we do have our first budget sessions planned for March 31st at 6:00 PM. We still have a lot of information that we need before we can bring you any type of a budget. As you all know, the stimulus money, the decision has not been made as to how that money will be used by school systems. The governor has not yet taken his budget to the state legislature. So there is some possibility that we may have to delay that meeting until the date that we've set in April. And also next month, I want you all to know that we will be bringing you a complete update of the two fabulous functions sponsored by the City Schools Foundation, our celebration last Friday night, and then also our fashion show. And I want to just stop and commend Cheryl Harris for the fabulous job she did in making that excellent celebration, such success. And we will certainly be having her take a bow before the camera next month. We wanted to wait until we had full information on the financial results of those two events. So Chairman Wade, Chair Lady Wade, those are all the items of communication tonight.
All right, Ms. Mathis, is it okay? Right, well, let's go ahead and get the consent items done and then right after that, we'll go ahead and move the reports up. Can I get a motion for the consent items?
Move, we approve the consent items.
Second?
Ms. Wade, I have a question on one of the items for the negotiation team. Are we, the negotiation team for, do they negotiate for the board? And the reason I'm asking, we-
Do we need to remove that from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Because if we're not discussing it all-
There are motions to remove it and we'll bring it down here in discussion items if you'd like to-
Okay, can we move it to the consent agenda? I mean the action items.
Okay. Is there a motion to-
Do we need a motion?
Yes. Is there a motion? Dr. Buttram, do you have a motion where you'd like to move it to the action items?
And that's where I'd need to move it, just ask a question?
Well, yes, either we can move it down here under Reports and Information and we can talk about it at that time.
It would need to be removed to the action items since it'll require a vote. But we already have a motion and a second on the floor for the consent agenda, so if you would want to withdraw those in-
Can I get the motion withdrawn? Well, Ms. Baker, I'll have to ask this question to you.
Okay.
If the person that makes the motion has no desire to withdraw their motion, it's been a second, do we have to continue to vote and call the roll?
You can vote on the motion that's on the table and then we need to move with the initial motion that is on the table.
All righty. Ms. Ridley, call the roll.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Can I? Just a question. Under what procedure do we have to move this? Do we have to vote on this?
To vote on the consent agenda?
Well, I understand there's a motion for the consent agenda.
If you want to-
Why do we have to have a motion against to move what Dr. Buttram is asking to the action items?
If a board member wants to remove something from the consent agenda, then they make that request.
I don't want to remove it, I wanted to ask a question.
Ask a question.
The consent agenda is set up so that there's no discussion, it's just yes or no, and if you want to remove something from it, there's an allowance to do that. That's what the consent agenda is. There's no discussion, you don't talk about it, and that's just what it is.
Is that board policy?
That's just what a consent agenda is on-
Is that board policy? We don't follow Robert's Rules of Order, so we can do it the way we want to.
Ms. Baker, for clarification. There's a motion on the floor. They did not rescind the motion. We have to vote on the motion on the floor.
I'll go ahead and rescind it, that's okay. I'll rescind it and then if somebody wants to, you know, vote on moving it or is it, I don't, I don't know, because we've never had it happen before, I don't know. Do you have to vote on moving something off the consent agenda? Or does it automatically go off of it if somebody wants to?
If someone wants to remove an item from the consent agenda, a board member would just need to make that request and remove it off of the consent agenda so it could be discussed and then voted on. If it's on the consent agenda, like you said, it's not, there's no discussion of consent agenda.
So, so if he wants to remove it, we just move it and then we'll talk about it there?
Right.
Okay.
Dr. Buttram? Did you want to remove that?
I guess I'd need to make a motion to remove-
No, we just-
No, we'll just move it, we'll move it.
Did you want to move to the action items for discussion?
Yes, yes.
All righty, now we're back to consent. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes of the regularly scheduled board meeting of February 24th, 2009.
Second. There's been a motion and second, Ms. Ridley, call the roll.
Dr. Buttram?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Okay. We do have two school reports tonight and I'm delighted to get to introduce those. I'm going to ask that we change the order of those just slightly and have Scales Elementary Schools report go first. Principal Katrine Stevens, if you would please introduce your report to us and welcome to the podium.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to share about Scales and what makes it a valuable part of Murfreesboro City Schools. Little did I know, when I became a principal of Scales, what an impact having a school named for such a prominent, amazing family would have on all of us. Mary Scales, one of our namesakes, is here this evening and I felt it very appropriate for her to share with you her thoughts about Scales.
Ms. Wade, members of the board, Ms. Mathis and staff, thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight to tell you that my heart cannot express the feeling I have for your naming this school, Scales Elementary. The young man for which you name in memory of truly believed in education. He served on the city school council for 24 years and his heart was education. He made sure that the money was appropriated for schools and other materials and that the raises and things for teachers were because he felt that education is the key for a better world. And so, by you doing that, and he also went on to serve on the Tennessee Higher Education Commission to make sure that Middle Tennessee State University got its share of the appropriation. So his whole life has been centered around education. And so, and the other person named that you have, his wife, you gave me my start here in Murfreesboro City School. That was my first job of teaching and boy, it set the stage. Every place I went, I used example of what we did here in Murfreesboro City School. I had an opportunity to serve as a mathematics specialist for the state of Tennessee, traveling all over the state in different schools. And by doing that, when you walk in a school, all of these educators know, you get the feel of what's happening in that school. And let me tell you, when you walk in Scales Elementary School, you get that feeling that happy children, learning is taking place, we're just so excited. I sat where you are, I served on the Murfreesboro City School Board for eight years and I do appreciate what you're doing because what you do affects everyone either directly or indirectly. So I'd like to thank you for the role that you're playing in helping children. My husband, it was just something about him, we're in the ambulance funeral business. If there were a family and they had children, he made sure that they had shoes and coat to wear to the funeral. His heart was children. He would always say, Mary, but it's the children, it's about the children. And so, for you, I just, I know he knows what's happening down here, but it just, you made a great choice. My heart also is still in education and I do believe that that is the key for a better world. And Murfreesboro City School sets the stage and they have a school, Scales Elementary. You have a principal and teachers and staff, everybody. It's just a great, if you have not had an opportunity to visit that school, you'll get that feeling that I'm talking about when you, when you walk in. But is there no way, I was asked to say how I felt about this school being named Scales. It is a legacy. I and my family are trying to live up to this because the head of the family led us in this direction and he gave his life supporting education. I am trying to follow in his footsteps because I do believe that, as our new president says, that education is the key if we really want to make a better world. And I think that's really what's going on today. So here I am, I can express to you how I feel because I always think about the other half of me, Scales, they refer to him as T-90. But if I did not like education, I couldn't have lived with him. Sometimes I would say, Scales, now we can't do this right now. He said, but Mary, it's about the children. So every time he said that, he thought that everything would really change because he would help families at a time when we had something else to do with the money, but it was always about children. And that's what you're doing here at Murfreesboro City School and I appreciate what you're doing. I know that it takes an effort on your part, you could be doing other things, but that's what it's all about. So I thought about a little poem that I have hanging on my kitchen. And it says, "100 years from now, it would not matter what kind of car I drove, what kind of house I lived in, how much money I had in my bank account, not what my clothes looked like, but the world may be a little better place because I was important in the life of a child." Thank you.
She is a treasure and she is very active at Scales, as is Madeline, who is next to Mary, and other siblings as well. When Mary's in the building, Queen Mary has arrived. They all know her and bow to her. A successful school, as you know, begins with a strong leadership team and I have been very fortunate to have an assistant principal who shares the same philosophy and vision for student success. So I'd like him just to share a couple of words with you as well.
Good evening, everybody. I'm just going to give a perspective of being fortunate to open three schools in my career in different roles. And one thing that I didn't imagine that I would get to see was three or four different campuses in 2005, coming together and seeing all the diversity and seeing all the different backgrounds coming together and now four years later, all one big school. So I just appreciate it and not everybody gets to see that and I've been blessed to see that, so thank you.
We do have a video that we've put together. I would like to recognize all those individuals that are here this evening that are in the video so you can see them, students, grandparents, parents, if you guys would stand, if you were in that video, here they are, here they are. The video is just a way to show you how Scales is an exceptional learning environment for children, a welcoming environment for parents and guests, a challenging, nurturing, and positive environment for teachers and staff and supportive as well. So I hope you will enjoy this presentation. Thank you. Something special that sets Scales apart is the family atmosphere that is so evident when you enter the building. From the photographs of students, family members, and faculty members, to the people that you will see throughout the building and the artwork that is generated by both students and adults, this school really is about celebrating all those within the walls of Scales Elementary. And that is indeed what makes this school such a family atmosphere. Once a superstar, always a superstar.
Hello, my name is Kayla Barnes.
And I am Cameron Massengill.
And we are this year's Scales Science Kids.
Every week, we bring hands-on science experiments to life. All of our episodes include a science definition and experiment and a vocabulary word for all the Scales students to learn.
We then use questions to reinforce the skills that were covered in that episode. The Scales student body answers these questions. Winners are selected and then appear in the morning announcements the following day to receive their prize.
The Science Kids were created as a way to spark more interest in science. We also do this by getting as many kids and staff as possible involved in our episode.
We choose our topics based on our science curriculum for all grades K through 6. My favorite experiment so far has been when we used our Scales rocket to discuss the power of gravity.
And mine was when we used our teachers' classroom pets to study animal adaptations. We saw some really cool pets.
By the way, all of our episodes are online at the Scales website under Mr. Preesi's Special Area page and can be viewed and enjoyed by all, even teachers in other buildings.
Scales Chorus is an after-school program that exposes the children to something that they don't get in regular music class. Chorus is compiled of 4th through 6th grade students and is important because it teaches them team-building and responsibility. This year, the students were given the opportunity to serve our community, they were invited to sing the National Anthem at an MTSU basketball game, it did an excellent job. The children love to sing and that's what it's all about.
Volunteers are part of the nurturing and the loving nature of this school and you can see that and how eager the kids are to see the tutors coming every day. I mean, there's hugs galore from all sides. There's no reward as powerful to me as seeing a kid's eyes grow big when he suddenly gets a big math task in his mind and watching a slow, shy smile light up a once frowning face, there's nothing like it. We volunteers provide kind of a gateway to knowledge, but we're also models of caring and reliable adult figures and there never can be too many of those, so what a delight being a volunteer.
We are so fortunate to work with Ms. Patty Pearson and Pinnacle Banking in our Bank at School program. This program is entirely student-centered. These 5th grade children interview for specific jobs, perform duties weekly, integrate mathematics and communication skills in all their contacts with other students, and learn the process of positive interactions and positive problem-solving. This banking program teaches children to save money and hopefully develop a lifestyle habit that will follow them into adulthood. We have over 200 students involved in this program and that number grows yearly.
Good morning, good morning, I'm with our community star, Mr. Ralph Funn!
The Scales Community Superstar Program is a real example of how a school can be part of community and a community part of a school. Each week, we have a community superstar who is named and interviewed by Ms. Stevens in the morning announcements and then they talk about their careers and they get to visit classrooms. We began the Community Superstar Program when the school opened and I appreciate as a grandparent that my grandchildren have the opportunity to be introduced to so many careers. As an educator, I appreciate the fact that we're beginning early to introduce students to who they can become.
As a parent of two children at Scales Elementary, I feel very blessed. The environment at Scales gives all parents a great opportunity to be involved in many areas of the school and encourages parents to participate in PTO, classroom activities, and especially events such as our Step Up and Serve fundraiser, the school lock-in, serving at the Thanksgiving luncheon, and volunteering at the book fair and picture day, just to name a few. Scales welcomes our talents and skills to help nurture and inspire our children. I have personally had the privilege of being starburst, our school mascot, at basketball games and school functions to help promote school spirit. Go Superstar!
Oh, this is the exciting part of the morning, it's time to recognize shining stars! He's from Miss Hook's class!
He is from Miss Hook's!
Each student at Scales is a star. However, sometimes there are students that are seen shining a bit brighter than the rest. This brightness catches the eyes and attention of teachers and parents. These students could be shining brighter because of super choices, good attitudes, improvements, or just going above and beyond expectations. These shining stars are recognized weekly in front of teachers, parents, and their peers. Here at Scales, we love to celebrate the accomplishments of our shining stars.
Hi, I'm Kimberly and I am this year's Student Council President. At Scales, our Student Council membership is made up of 4th through 6th grade students, but all students K through 6 participate in our projects. Some of our projects have been Lucky Grams, recycling, canned food drive for Family Resource Center, and recently Pennies for Peace where we were able to raise over $1,200. Student Council is designed to give our students a voice and provide them with an opportunity to serve both our campus and community.
Five Star Friends is an invaluable part for children with special needs. A typical developing child has the abilities to help and assist a student with special needs to perform a task, whereas a special needs child unknowingly assists a typical child in teaching them patience. This is a character-building exercise that can change children in a positive way. Five Star Friends helps students learn teamwork, compassion, and friendship that lasts forever.
One of my favorite things to do with Five Star Friends is to work with Phoenix. He is one of the students in Mr. Wes Moreland's room. We work on knowing letters and numbers. He's really fun to work with and I look forward to the times that I get to go see.
Every Tuesday morning on morning announcements, we get to watch an episode of our student newscast. These are filmed every week and are used to inform our students about upcoming events around our school, such as PTO meetings, book fair, Jump Rope for Heart, basketball season, Parent University Step Up and Serve, and many others. I have enjoyed being a part of this program because I know that it helps our students be more involved in our school. A handful of students from the 5th and 6th grade participate in this program as our newscasters. Everyone on the team brings a different personality to delivering the news and keeps the information very fresh.
One of the main events at Scales is our one-and-done Step Up and Serve fundraiser. With this fundraiser, we are able to both raise funds for our school and raise funds for our community. Each grade level adopts a local service agency. Not only are we teaching our children how to give back to their community, we give them the opportunity to serve. Each grade level conducts at least one act of service for their agency. Our children learn finances and action together are needed to make a positive difference in our world.
As you know, at Scales, it's always about the children. There are many experiences that make the learning environment at Scales a sensational one for both children and adults. And here's just a few more ways in which we motivate children. We take on characters as adults. This is done to motivate and inspire students to achieve success personally and academically. Our children are even afforded unique opportunities as serving as junior principal, yet another motivational tool. At Scales, it is always about the children and that is what helps to make all superstars shine. shine.
I'd like to take a moment and congratulate Ms. Stevens and her staff on such a wonderful, exciting presentation, and it is always a tremendous privilege to have Mary Scales with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary Scales, for coming. And Mary did not brag much about herself. I do want to remind everybody, she served on our board for eight years and served on the city council for four. We heard about Robert T. Ninety Scales, but didn't hear very much about yourself. That just shows the kind of wonderful character that you are. Ms. Scales, thank you very much. And our next report is by Principal Barbara Tuckson of Irma Segal Elementary School. Ms. Tuckson, if you would please come to the podium.
Good evening. It is indeed a pleasure to represent Irma Segal Elementary School, home of the soaring eagles. We will share with you tonight snapshots and excerpts of activities that take place as we educate, as we soar, and excel, trying to inspire students to reach their maximum potentials. These snapshots represent activities that's conducted by the greatest professional staff anywhere, by really and truly respectful and responsible students, by caring and supportive parents, and by our terrific staff. So we're very proud of all of them. I would be remiss if I did not say a special thanks to Mickey Brooks and to John Patton, Channel 3 News, who helped to captivate the essence of Irma Segal Elementary School. And I want to also say a special thank you to Mr. Rich and to Mrs. Dodd, our librarian. And I need to relax two parents tonight, Mr. and Mrs. Taylor, who is the parents of Caroline Taylor, and to Mr. and Mrs. Nedro, who is the parents of John. We start mentorship early at Irma Segal, and you will see them tonight making their Hollywood debut right here in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. So parents, relax, and thank you so much for sharing your children with us, and they will share with you the presentation that we have tonight. We're ready. Mr. Brooks.
Hi, hello. My name is Caroline Taylor. I am going to help Ms. Tuckson tell you about Segal Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Jack. I'm reporting from Irma Segal Elementary. I want to share with you some great things going on at our school. Sit back, relax, and enjoy.
At the beginning of each year, we have Family Fun Night. We have games, face painting, food, and so much more, and it is all free.
Family Fun Night is an annual event that we have in Irma Segal. We usually have it in the fall around the beginning of the year, and it's a time where we invite out our students, our parents, our faculty, and our community stakeholders just for an evening of free entertainment. We like the fact that it's free. We usually have games and food and just good fellowship for everyone.
We are practicing to be anchors for the Segal Morning News. We begin our day with the news.
Each morning at Irma Segal, we do the Segal Morning News, where the 6th graders run the show. We have anchors, copyholders, and a person that does the music and camera. They give the announcements for the day. They do birthdays, any kind of special events in history, or any kind of specials that we have on the news. They have to work it like a job. They have to be responsible for their position and are required to be here on time. They have to take it seriously and do well in their classes.
Our 5th and 6th graders run our Student Council. They make many important decisions to help our school.
Our Student Council involves 5th and 6th grade at Irma Segal. We're really more of a service-oriented organization. The students, during Student Council at the beginning of the school year, they have to go through an application process. They have an application they fill out, and then they also have to write an essay. They do have an agenda. The president has to give me the agenda before the meeting, and the secretary has to give me the minutes. So we try to run it just like a city council meeting if at all possible. In fact, Shane McFarlane came and spoke to them, and I think that kind of helped them to kind of get an idea of what it's all about. Some of the activities that we have done that have been service more oriented, we have done every year in the springtime, we do a shoe drive for one of the local churches. They go on a mission trip, and they take shoes that we have collected in other places to Appalachia, and it is a huge success. I think we've collected, over the past two years, we've collected over 3,000 pairs of shoes.
We celebrate good behavior.
With the opening of Irma Segal Elementary in 1998, it was the desire of the staff to encourage and recognize those students exhibiting appropriate behavior and character traits for good citizenship. We have had a character count program since our school opened, including monthly luncheon recognitions. We also participated in a three-year grant through Vanderbilt University entitled Love in a Big World, for the purpose of encouraging appropriate behavior for living in our society. Character education is a way of life that we want to instill in our students.
Each year, our parents attend parent class. They love to learn about what these students are doing at school.
Each year at Segal, for the past two years, we've offered Parent University, and it's a chance for parents to come in and find out what's going on at school. For example, we offer classes on test-taking tips for Terranova, writing assessment. We offer classes on morning meeting, which is something we've incorporated into our classrooms. And we also had a class on healthy snacks. There were just numerous classes offered to parents, and it's a great time for teachers to interact with the parents.
We celebrate Parents' Month in February. Students love learning about all the different cultures.
So during the month of February, we do celebrate Black History Month and emphasize the contributions of African-Americans in our country. However, we also celebrate various cultures. Our goal is to let students experience hands-on, different cultures, traditions, different than their own, especially focusing on the other backgrounds that we have here at our school, but also just to help them develop an appreciation for other cultures. Ms. Darling Thomas's class every year always celebrates the Chinese New Year. It's a holiday that starts on the first day of the New Year, January 1st, and ends 15 days later. Throughout that holiday, she will have them have a costume dance. They actually make the lions out of boxes. They have the traditional family reunion dinner. They'll actually sit on the floor barefoot using chopsticks, and they'll end the celebration with a lantern parade around the school dressed in Chinese clothing.
Irma Segal has always had an outdoor classroom. We have plants, a pond, and many cool things to help students learn.
I teach 6th grade science at Irma Segal Elementary, and I'm going to talk about our outdoor classroom. The 6th grade has used the pond and what we have with the outdoor classroom. We've used it for math. We've used it for science, and we used it to train a group to help take care of the pond. They call themselves the Scum Patrol. They stay after school and help to clean it up. We've used it for measuring area. We've also been out with science. We've been trying to identify some of the plants, and this spring coming, we know a lot of plants are going to come back up and things will flush out, so we need to identify the plants. So we've used it that way.
This year was our second annual vocabulary parade at Irma Segal. The 1st grade classes chose vocabulary words that they depicted during the parade. We encourage the children to be creative, but to use materials that they already had at home. We feel that the children use their imaginations while enriching their vocabulary.
We have two math clubs that meet after school. Students learn some hard math and use calculators.
I want to talk to you about our special math program for students that are high-achieving. We have two after-school programs for students with high scores in mathematics. One of those programs is run by Kelly Wilson, who is a classroom teacher here at Segal Elementary, and it's for 3rd graders and for 4th graders. They meet on two separate days because she's found that it works better developmentally for those groups to be on separate days. Additionally, I, along with a volunteer, Mr. Bill Witheroe, who is a substitute teacher here from time to time, are running a 5th and 6th grade Math Challenge Club. This targets the students with high TCAF scores who are motivated to go even further than the things we can offer them in the regular classroom.
Many of our students use exercise balls in the classroom. They help us sit up and pay attention.
I want to talk to you about a new exercise program that we have at Irma Segal. We started this program last year, and what it is are exercise balls that are used instead of the traditional chairs at the students' desks. There's lots of benefits that we've found to using the exercise balls. Part of that would be that it does build your core muscles, your back muscles, your abs, when you're sitting on these because you're having to balance. They've also found that it does improve your balance and your coordination by sitting on the yellow balls, as we call them. The Mayo Clinic has actually done some research and found that it burns calories just by sitting on these instead of a traditional chair. So they're thinking that might help to fight the childhood obesity. We also found that there's a stimulation that the students get by using the yellow balls just from having the sway back and forth or a little bounce in their seat, that they'll get the fidgets out that they may have if they were just sitting regularly.
Check out these science activities. We even have a science club.
I assist with the science club after school. We have a group of children that come every week, and we break them up into groups, and they're able to do hands-on experiments that enrich what they do in class. And we work towards the Science MBI, which takes place in April, and it is a competition between elementary-age kids that's in a non-threatening, friendly environment.
We hope you have enjoyed learning more about my school. This is Caroline Andra, reporting from Irma Segal Elementary in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Have a great night.
Well, that was great.
It was.
Thank you to both Scales and to Segal. Ms. Mathis, action items?
I believe that you've moved the, one of your consent items. And since it's my responsibility to make a recommendation to you on all action items, and of course, that would include the consent, I do want to read to you your board policy regarding the negotiations team that I'm asking you to approve. The Murfreesboro City School Board recognizes the major responsibility of its negotiating team. It is the policy of the board to grant full authority to said team appointed by the Director of Schools to represent the board in the negotiations process. And I might stop here and say, it's not a requirement that I bring to you the names of those folks who would represent you, but I felt like that you would like to have some part in this. So I have, for the last couple of years, brought you the names of those people that are representing you in negotiations. The team, composed of professionals and employees, has a most important role in that it represents the legal government structure of a school system as it relates to law, rules, regulations, and the democratic and representative traditions of our American democracy. In essence, the team is representing the board. The board assures immunity to the negotiating team from professional or personal reprisals from the board as it discharges the duties of this assignment. And this is your board policy, BO15, entitled Responsibility, Authority, and Rights of Negotiating Team. And I do recommend that you appoint Lee Wilkerson as our chief negotiator with Gary Anderson as team member. They've done a fabulous job representing you in the past.
Dr. Wretchen, you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. And I can say that I've seen Mr. Wilkerson and Mr. Anderson in action, and they do a fabulous job for us, and I do appreciate them for what they do. But my question was, if in the representation of us, the board, when is it appropriate for the board to be given information that they are to take back with answers? For instance, there was an item discussed in negotiations two weeks ago. We received minutes of the negotiation session, but then they went back to the board with a recommendation on that article, and, but we weren't given any input. So if they're representing us, at what point do we give input on those individual items that they're talking about every single week or every session?
Well, and any of the other board members can be mean at any time. I think that I was under the impression as negotiators for this board, and it's only my definition, my own, that anything that was discussed, we had entrusted the two, that, well, Lee and Gary and whoever else is on this committee, we had entrusted in them to take care of it. Now, I'm pretty sure we've been getting minutes.
You get minutes, and of course, you don't approve the contract until it's brought to you as a total contract. And from time to time, as you read those minutes, you'll find that typically, you receive a proposal from MEA, and then we respond back at the next meeting. I've received input from various board members, so nothing prohibits you from giving me a call.
Okay, so we can give input, so the answers that...
It would be given to me.
But the answers that Mr. Wilkerson takes back to the teachers are actually your answers or our answers?
They would reflect whatever we have studied and reviewed in the law. Right now, we're doing the entire contract. When it comes to salary, I think you all know that I call all of you to find out and get input on salary when that time comes. In fact, I think we went to mediation a year, so you certainly know that you've been allowed to give input. I'm not sure I know what your question is.
Well, all right, say tomorrow, they talk about an item that we feel maybe they should compromise with the teachers on, do we let you know that? And then your answer to Lee will reflect...
It could reflect a single person's. If I find that it's a very strong answer, I would call and ask for input from all the board if there's a differentiation of opinion as to what our typical answer might be on something. If you'd like to call me privately and talk about this, I would like to do that. Typically, we don't discuss negotiations in a public forum. That is something that we try to...
Well, I'm not discussing the details of the negotiation, but it's the process itself. And I just felt like the teachers think that we're giving these answers back to them when we're really not. So I want to make sure if we're being represented, that we're having input on every single issue that you answer to Mr. Wilkerson.
Well, I think you have given us the authority to respond to them, and I think that's certainly delineating your board policy.
Given the authority to the negotiating team or to you?
To the negotiating team, as appointed by me, yes.
Okay, but you appoint them, but then I think we should have input on what they're going back with the teachers.
You certainly are welcome to call me, and I will certainly listen.
Thank you.
I believe that's a negotiations and the negotiating team is a management function. I can't imagine of any corporation in the United States where the board of directors gets involved in the labor negotiations. So I think the board should be informed of what's going on and aware of that, but the details of that needs to be left to management, in my opinion. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Phillips?
Well, that's what my understanding was, was that we empowered our negotiating team to work in the best interest of all the parties of the school system. And I know that when I have had a strong feeling about a particular issue, I have always just picked up the phone and shared my opinion with Ms. Mathis. So there's that way, there's that vehicle to communicate.
Are there any more questions or comments before we ask for a vote? Mr. Campbell? Comment? And I appreciate Ms. Mathis, because I really didn't know how we were, how we gave our thoughts to the negotiating team. I don't have a problem with Gary or Lee the one, as far as that goes. They know what they're doing. The sessions that I have been to, I have felt like they have done very well professionally. I would...
I would encourage, as the Tennessee School Board Association will encourage, board members to attend negotiating sessions. For years, I think it has been felt like that, and for some time, with this, with Murfreesboro City School Board, that board members should not attend, but that's not, that's not what Tennessee School Board Association says, as they have indicated on two different occasions and one through email. The only thing that I would like to ask Ms. Mathis, or Gary, or Lee, I don't like to be blindsided from somebody, "Well, guess what they did to us," or "Guess what we didn't get," or, you know? There's nothing worse than somebody blaming you for something that you don't know anything about. And I think the communication that you're talking about, I think that will alleviate that. But when, when you gentlemen negotiate, and you're negotiating for all of us, I think, the communications, I think, that you send out has been good, and I appreciate that, so that at least we have a little bit of an idea on what's going on when we're not able to attend.
Dr. Andrews?
Yeah. I appreciate that we have a difference of opinion about whether or not we should attend negotiations, and I did see that it is, that the TSBA says legally it is acceptable for board members to be there. There have been sessions about negotiations that it was recommended that we let the staff do that and that we not be at negotiations. And I understand there's a, you know, that we, there are different feelings on the board, and I think it's worked well in the past to let our negotiators work without our kind of hovering. But I, you know, I appreciate there's a difference of opinion on that, and I guess we'll each, you know, do what we feel is best. And it has been the philosophy of this board, not to be involved, but I, you know, there can be a movement the other way. Looks like there is. But that's just my opinion. I think the way it was done made sense, and it's worked well.
Are there any more questions?
And I do appreciate all the teachers that work hard on negotiation teams for the MEA, and I appreciate what our negotiators are doing. It's a tough job, and I think we all, in the long run, want what's best for our children, which is generally what's going to be best for our teachers, too.
Ms. Duggan, then Dr. Bertram.
Being new on the board and attending training by TSBA, in the original training I received, that was part of what was discussed, was negotiations and attendance there. And they did share that they felt it was important that board members, on occasion, attend a session, one, to show support for the board's team, and to show support of the teachers and the process that goes on, making it very clear that if you do attend, that you are not to speak, you're not to, you know, let on, that you're even there, really. You know, you should sit back out of the way and not be interference. Now, being on both sides of this coin, so to speak, as a teacher in the district, many times I attended negotiation sessions, one, just to show interest to the board's team and to show my fellow teachers that I was interested in what was going on. So I have attended once as a board member. I spoke to people as they came in the door, and that was the only thing I said during the meeting, just to let them know that we were interested. It doesn't have anything to do with not having faith in our own team, because the team was there and on time and ready to get started. But I think that either TSBA has changed their stance on this, or, you know, and I thought maybe I misunderstood, so I actually had to ask again, you know, "Did I hear you correctly?" But they did say that they would encourage board members to, when they could, to attend, just to show support.
Well, I was just going to add that, just in support of the teachers also, I'd like for them to know our position as board members. So if we might could send something to the teachers from Central Office, saying that, you know, the board will be involved this way, we are here to hear from them if they need to talk to us. And I just think the teachers should know how involved we want to be and can be.
Do you want to change our policy?
Well, let me say this, and certainly I appreciate the board members for their comments and everything they've said. I really appreciate getting some opportunity to discuss this. I think every teacher in this system is aware of how we feel. I don't want anything to undermine the process. The process, and I appreciate the board members going, those that get a chance to go, go. And those that, you know, maybe something's on your schedule and you can't, that's still good. But let's not undermine the process. Let's let the process work. If the teachers have any comments, I think there's something in place for you to make your comments, and if you would like to, every now and then, maybe express what you feel, let's let it work the way it's intended to work. And if we're needed, we're here. We're always here for you. They know that. I don't see sending a message out as a broadcast. I think they listen. I'm surprised at how many of them really take the time to sit and listen to our meetings and hear our discussions. So let's let the negotiating team, after we take our vote on it, work. Those that are going, continue to go, and let's see how the process pans out this time. I'm impressed with the communication I've gotten. And let's remember, if you have any suggestions for the negotiating team, please send that to Mrs. Mathis and Carbon, Gary, Lee, and I think you'll get your message over. But let's do our job as board members. Ms. Ridley?
There's a, we need to get a motion on the floor.
What is the motion?
I'm asking for a motion, too.
Thank you, ma'am.
I move that we approve the negotiations team for 2009-10, Lee Wilkerson and Gary Anderson.
Motion, Dr. Andrews, second by Ms. Duggan. Call the roll, Ms. Ridley.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Bertram?
Yes.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Mathis, let's continue.
Yes, I am pleased to bring to you the names of 36 individuals that I recommend to be awarded tenure in the Murfreesboro City School System effective June 1, 2009. You'll find their names behind Tab 2, and I will read the names that I am recommending for tenure. Julia Barrett, Courtney Brown, Carla Burton, Linda Clark, Doris Coffey, Kathy Crabtree, Siobhan Davis Lewis, Leah Fallis, Sarah Galian, Kimberly Gates, Janice Gilbert, Alicia Johnson, Danielle Kaminsky, Noel Koenig, Brooke LaRache, Greg Lawson, Karen Lloyd, Tricia Luntie, Christina Maddox, Jessa McDaniel, Ann Montgomery, John P. Orman, Melissa Papella, Tammy Pertle, Jennifer Polk, Karen Puckett Stinson, Mary Rice, Crystal Rochon, Teresa Rotella, Lori Shea, Amy A. Smith, Shereen Staples, Andrea Summerall, Darlene Thomas, Jennifer Wells, and Lee Wilkerson. And I might ask that you note that I refer to these people as teachers. The law describes or defines a teacher, including teachers, supervisors, principals, directors of schools, and all other certificated personnel. So you will note that there is a principal on this list, and there are three central office members. They would, by definition of the law, be considered a teacher, because the law also goes on and says administrative and supervisory personnel shall have tenure as teachers and not necessarily tenure in the specific type of position in which they may be employed. So I'm recommending these 36 individuals to you to be awarded, to be awarded tenure as teachers in Murfreesboro City Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis. Now, this is definitely a milestone in a personnel, teachers, or office staff's life. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second. Ms. Ridley? Give me back a question.
Yes, I have questions. I'd like to have the three names of the central office personnel removed from the tenure list for further discussion. And that's not anything personal to them. I would like to discuss their position. And I think we can do that, can't we, Ms. Baker?
We've got another motion.
He has to bring it in the form of a motion.
It needs to come in the form of a motion to remove their names from the list.
That's what he just did.
Was that a motion, Dr. Bertram?
Well, I wasn't aware that it needed to be a motion. I thought we just requested, and then we had the discussion.
The law requires the director to make her recommendation, and the board to vote on the recommendation. As part of the discussion, if you want to make a motion to only approve a certain people, then that's a separate motion. And if you want to discuss certain people, then you need to move to remove them and then have the discussion.
Okay.
But you don't want to remove by name, am I correct?
Right. Well, it's a list of individuals to approve for tenure. And so if there are some of the individuals in the list that the board is not, wants to discuss before they vote for recommendation, then you would need to make a motion to discuss.
I thought you told me that we would just need to request. I didn't, I don't think you said that we had to make a motion, and that, because wouldn't that have to be voted on by the board before those names could be removed to discuss?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to request that those three be moved off for discussion.
There's been a motion that the entire panel be approved, and in order to change that, we need to request, you need to make that motion to remove individuals from the panel if you don't want to vote on the entire panel.
Okay.
I guess you can, I would assume you-
Or you can discuss those, the issue you want to discuss based on the entire panel-
Okay, all right.
-as part of the discussion of the motion that's pending.
I want to make sure by, I have no problem with discussion, but I just want to make sure that, caution as board members, let's keep it as a, just what it is, a discussion. Some things we know, a list on the person that matters, we cannot discuss. Now, can they, the names have been read, but can they single out names and have a discussion? Or can discussion be just without using names? Or if he has a question about something that maybe you don't understand about it, can we do that?
It's my understanding the discussion is relative to positions and-
Okay.
-not individual names would be used.
Okay, we have three, three central office management positions that people are filling that are being recommended for tenure. My question was, when these positions were hired, was it required that they have a certificate?
Yes, it was. Their job description requires them to have a Tennessee teacher's license.
Okay, Ms. Mathis, you said that it was preferred.
I said that that was, no, I said I was not sure without looking up the one that you asked me about. You asked me about Mr. Wilkerson. I said I knew positively in the case of Danielle Kaminsky and Crystal Rochon. But I said I would have to look up Mr. Wilkerson's, because I didn't recall whether we said it might have been preferred. I will tell you, past history on that job has always required a certificate, but I did not want to answer you inaccurately. I did not look it up at the time you did not ask me to. But I have since looked it up, and it did require a certificate, yes.
Thank you.
Good luck.
The question, though, is, are the positions that are involved, I think we set ourselves up for having future directors come in, and those are positions that they could possibly bring with them or possibly want to fill. And again, I apologize to Ms. Rochon, Ms. Kaminsky, and Mr. Wilkerson, because this is nothing personal to them, but I think that our system should not hire into management positions and then tenure, tenure those positions, because they may not be certified. Some of them are not certified in those positions in central office. But if we set the precedent to tenure those people, then if those positions are dissolved or those people are moved, there may not be a position for them to be moved to. So again, this doesn't affect their, the three people's jobs. They would still have jobs, of course, but I don't think the positions should be tenured positions at that level.
Dr. Andrews?
I'd like to just make a few comments. The precedent has been set for many years, so it's not a matter of setting a precedent. There is a precedent set. The tenure is not for the position that they hold. Their tenure is that they will be assured of a job as a teacher or another higher position in our system unless that we go through the process to deny them their tenure or take their tenure away. So if someone came in from another system, or we, you know, we got a new director of schools, and they decided that they did not want to have a certain person as director of instruction or whatever, then what they would do is they can find another spot in the school system, and there's always another spot open. You know, there's always a teaching position that comes open, and that person can move there. They may not choose to move to that position, but that's the way it's been set up. I think that it's a, it's not tremendous job security. It's not like you have tenure to be principal for the rest of your life or until you want to retire. But it does give them a little bit of job security and the respect that they deserve as certificated teachers. And I think, I think they do that. These are people who've worked hard to get to the positions they're in, and they-
Let's not talk about the people, though. I'm talking about the positions, not the people.
I'm talking about, if anyone is in the position that, of, in, working in the central office, they, they've worked hard to get there. I don't care who it is. And it's, it would not be good for us when we hire people to put them in a situation where they knew they couldn't get tenure. I don't think that would be of a benefit. So I don't quite see where the problem lies. If you can move someone to a different position and bring whoever in you want in, I don't see where the problem lies, I guess.
What if we-
Ms. Mathis?
Excuse me, let's try to do this one at a time. I think I had somebody on this side. I tried to catch it. Was someone on this side? All righty.
Ms. Mathis, my question is, the teacher, the tenure recommendation, as it stands originally, does do any of those positions, does it depart in any way from our practices over the last two decades?
I have been with the school system for 25 years, and I do know a little bit of the history prior to that, and absolutely not. We've always had a license required for our director of instruction. We now call that person the coordinator of instruction. I know when Dr. Klaus was our personnel director, it was required that he have a license. He was followed by Laurie Crowder. It was required that she have a license. She was followed by Philip Puddleston. It was required that he have a license as personnel director. And so I know that this certainly is our past precedent.
Ms. Wade?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'd like to make this statement that, again, we tenure people as teachers. Even if they're hired as a principal, we tenure them as teachers. So when you have people in, working in the central office, I'm not sure how they're evaluated. So I'm not sure how they were given the, their tenure recommendation, how they would be, or who was on the tenure committee that helped decide this. But I think that we set ourselves up for some awkward situations in the future. If we tenure positions that have not been evaluated as teachers since tenure can only be granted for or as a teacher. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. Are there any more comments?
I have one. I have a question. Do we have some staff in the central office now that are tenured people?
Yes, we do. Priscilla Van Therese is on the management team, and she is tenured.
So we would have, under this arrangement, we would have some people that were being treated one way and others that were being treated differently, is that correct?
That's correct.
So-
Dr. Andrews? Uh, Dr. Andrews?
And, and I would assume that we also have teachers that in the past have worked their way up through the system, who had tenure, and then they have moved into the central office and they maintain, they retain their tenure.
I'm sure that's happened, I can't-
Linda Gilbert, you know, I would imagine-
Well, thank you for that reminder, just sitting right in the audience. She was sitting in the audience, yes, as our director of instruction. Linda Gilbert had been a music teacher in our schools, absolutely.
But they were evaluated as teachers before they were given tenure, right?
She would have received tenure already before she came to the central office.
As a teacher.
But principals are required to have a performance contract. They're not even under the same regulations that a teacher is, and that would hold true for the job description. The job description would delineate or would set out how you would evaluate the person. They can't be evaluated as a teacher because they're not teaching.
And let me thank you as board members for giving me the opportunity to try and catch your hands as you want to speak. I was brought to my attention that it would be better for the audience and the board if I recognized you before you speak, so we'd stop some of the other conversations going on and know that you have the floor. Thank you, Dr. Buttram, for your question, and all those that had questions, and some that had comments. The issue that, and this is strictly my spin on it, we're asked to look at this and either recommend tenure for these folks or deny tenure for these folks. Now, there is a policy, Mrs. Mathis read that policy. If there are any questions from the board that you want to change a policy, we have the opportunity at any time to have discussion and change policies. But you know the procedure for that is, you bring it in this meeting, and you're going to read through a few meetings. And, and thank you for your suggestion, that's something we'll need to look into when you are changing that policy. But right now, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we accept our director's recommendation to-
Thank you, we had so much discussion off the air. Thank you. Alrighty, we have a, a motion and a second. Ms. Ridley, please call the roll.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Buttram?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis, for carrying-
Yes, next is a recommendation on that same sheet behind tab two, that you reinstate the tenure of three teachers who left the system, and by law, unless you make an exception, they must serve a probationary year. And we have three teachers who have served their probationary year, the 2008, 2009 years, so at the end of June 1, 2009, they will have achieved tenure if you vote to reinstate their tender, tenure. And those teachers are, and I do recommend them, Karen Godwin, Cynthia Hall, and Jennifer Hall.
Are there any questions for any board members? Any questions for Ms. Mathis or any comments? Hearing none, we'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Second? What's her second? Thank you. Ms. Ridley, if you'll call the roll, please, ma'am.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Buttram?
Yes.
Mrs. Wade?
Yes.
Can we have just a, are you okay? Uh, we need two minute break.
A break.
A break. Can I get a two minute break, Ms. Mathis, or for a second? Thank you. Thank you so much. Mrs. Phillips, you had something you needed to say?
Yes, I did want to take just a moment and congratulate all our new tenure teachers. Thank them for all their service and what they're going to mean.
Yes, your next item, I'm asking for your approval of a revision to our current year's budget, FY09 budget. The revision would be by a net amount of $700,000. This would be to re-roof Black Fox Elementary School. The total cost of the roof, we anticipate being $800,000. We believe that we will get $100,000 in a grant from the state, an energy grant, so the net amount would be to revise the budget by $700,000. Provided for you behind tab three, a letter written by our architect, Lyle Lynch. He gives you a timetable, he talks to you about how much it would cost per square foot to do the re-roofing. And I've asked him to come tonight, Mr. Lyle, Mr. Lynch, if you would come to the podium. I wanted him to talk to you a little bit about the, what I have listed here as an add alternate. I think we will add that as just a regular amount on the budget, and he will explain that to you. Mr. Lynch, welcome. Thank you for coming and thank you for waiting so patiently.
Black Fox Elementary School was built in, I believe it was 1990, and the roof on that building was a 15-year warranty roof, and it's now almost 19 years old, so it's starting to fail and should be re-roofed. In the process of re-roofing, it has a concrete, lightweight insulating concrete roof deck on it, and that particular deck has to have an underlayment board on top of the concrete before we can put a roof on. And in the process of having to do that, it's appropriate to use inch and a half of insulation board for that particular function, and that increases the R-value of the roof and makes it a more energy efficient building. And the staff has determined that there may be funds available to help with this, to help with the cost of increasing the energy efficiency on the building, and that's the $100,000. Glad to answer any questions.
You may want to go with the schedule just a little bit, the project schedule when it will be complete, and whether it will interrupt children or not, I think that's always a critical issue.
Excellent. Yes, there's some dates down here on your letter. The last day of schools, which is only a half day, is May 29. And at the end of the year, per discussions with staff, that there's some testing going on, and so we didn't want any noise or disturbances to the children at the school until May 29. Takes about 90 days to re-roof at school, it's a very large building. And that, as you can see, something we're not real happy with is that it has students returning, your schedule to return August 11th, but it won't be 90 days until August 27th. These operations can be done while students are present. The disadvantages are potential noise on the roof and also the need to keep children away from certain areas. We're planning and have set the contract documents up so that the roofing operations end at the gym in order to facilitate this, so you're not disturbing an academic class during the time.
Mr. Lynch, has there been any prior repairs to this roof since it was first, the school was built?
It's my understanding that the maintenance department has patched this roof, but it's not been replaced.
Okay.
Was there tornado damage to the roof?
Yes, that was the gym, and that was several years ago, but yes, that was, that was the school, and yes, the, the roofing and the edge were, were torn off at the, at one corner of the gym. And of course, the edge and the roof in that area that was torn off was replaced, I'm sure.
Ms. Wade, I have a question for Ms. Mathis. When will we know about the $100,000 grant?
Uh, we, Gary, have you gotten any further information on that?
We haven't got any information yet. We are actually putting together another package because the state has reopened it looking for more grant requests, so they have not given us a timeframe yet, so we don't know.
Well, how would, how would this affect our, our budget or vote? Say, we, we wait, we vote, and then we don't get the grant, do we have to come back and add 100 more thousand, or would we be able to find that 100,000 somewhere else? Should we wait till we get news on the grant before we do this?
I guess I feel pretty confident that we'll get the grant, but if we don't, we would perhaps have to come back and vote again to take another 100,000 from reserve. And of course, the, the, this is just an estimate, the bid could come in under budget too, or it could come in over budget, so there are lots of bids here, and at best, we may, we would possibly have to come back to you for additional money.
Mr. Campbell?
I'll, I'll yield for the lady.
I was just looking at the schedule, and it looks like we really need to move right along in order to get it started when school is out.
I'm certainly not opposed to your going ahead and approving, moving $800,000 out of reserve, because it's certainly nothing that will be spent if it's not needed for this project, so that might be in the best interest of moving forward, Dr. Buttram.
Same type of roof that's presently there?
Murfreesboro City Schools, the new schools have a single membrane EPDM roofs on them. That's what's on Black Fox right now. When Northfield, which is a very similar school, was re-roofed some years ago, a modified bitumen roof was put on there. What, and there's been considerable debate upon how, what materials we use to re-roof this building. Murfreesboro City Schools has buildings with single membrane EPDM roofs and some, and a few buildings with the modified bitumen roof, and we were debating which would be less expensive. What we have set up at this time is to bid it both ways. It's a bid option one and a bid option two, since the school system and the maintenance department is comfortable with both of those and knows how to repair those and are familiar with them, and it's whichever is the lowest cost.
Are there any more questions or discussion? Ms. Duggan?
Do you think if we were to have a motion to put forth the 800,000, would that in any way have a negative impact on the request for the grant or the grant proposal?
I don't think it could possibly. They would not know what our budget is, so I really don't believe it would. It would just probably facilitate this moving a little bit faster.
Phillips, have a question.
Is there a roof type that is less conducive to mold and fungus, things like that?
Um, I, I don't think that either of these options have exhibited problems with us, not in the Murfreesboro City School system and not on projects that I'm familiar with.
If there are no more, uh, Mr. Campbell?
You're talking about the, the reserve money?
Yes.
Where is that now? How is that?
We have a sheet for you right at the end of tab three showing you the way our reserves are at this point, the effect that the $700,000 would have. It would reduce our reserves from four, about 4.9 million to 4.2 million. And of course, this change, if we were to move 800,000, would just make it 4.1 million by the end of June 30, 2009.
I, I guess I'm thinking about my own bank account.
Oh, where's the money?
No, 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 yeah, yeah, well, I don't have that much.
It's not invested in stocks.
She may, but I don't. Where, that 800,000 or 700,000, that's in like a savings, a CD or something similar?
Well, it's not that simple. Some of our money is, but as you can see right now, if you note our expenditure and revenue report, we're still actually behind on, it's just, it's just a bookkeeping entry that we're looking at right here as far as the real money. We don't get the real money until our budget is pretty much totally complete.
So we don't have the real money, whether it's 700 or 800, right now, today?
Not right now, not until the rest of our income.
I was just going to say, if we did, I'd say take 700, not take 800, because there's a hundred there.
Yeah, we would not be breaking a CD or anything like that. I see where you're coming from.
Thank you.
I think a lot of it's with that Madoff guy in New York. Get a check and then back next week.
That's, that's your stimulus.
He made off with it.
Ms. Duggan?
I'd like to make a motion, if it's appropriate, then that we would go ahead and take 800,000, and if the bid comes in under that, which I trust it will and hope it will, that way hopefully there'll be no delays in moving this forward, because I was in a building at one point when the roof was being worked on, and I think we need to do all we can to make sure that it's not being worked on any more than possibly necessary once the kids are there.
I'd second that motion.
It's been a motion and second. Ms. Ridley, please call the roll. Oh, excuse me.
I'm still, so I apologize, Ms. Wade, I'm still back on the mold and mildew, not to be beating a dead horse here, but I do remember that there was a problem at Northfield with mold, was there not?
There was mold in the building, but not actually mold on the roof itself. That roof, you may want to address that.
If I can address that, please. There's, there's some concern that this, the existing roof deck is a lightweight insulating concrete roof deck, and we've had tests on there to test the moisture content on that to see if mold will grow. Some of the areas came up positive for water in there, and so we have put some one-way vents and a ventilating bay sheet as part of the roofing operation to address that issue.
Is that how it was resolved at Northfield?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Just, I just want to make sure we are doing the very best we can for our kids. Thank you for answering this question.
Ms. Ridley, what you call Ms. Phillips for? Let her get up.
Ms. Phillips? Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Ridley, call the roll.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Buttram?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Reports and information.
Yes, we have already completed report A, and report B is discussion of tuition change for out-of-county students, and I did send you some additional information on that topic in a mailing, and this was an item that was requested be put on here by Dr. Buttram.
Dr. Buttram?
Well, I actually brought up this item because a, a citizen of Murfreesboro was talking to me one day and found out that we had some out-of-county students attending our school, and I told him that they had always been, they had always attended our school and that we charge a tuition for that, I believe $900 per family. I think we used to charge a tuition for out-of-city students that lived in Rutherford County of 200, and we dissolved that, but we still charge the $900. And I noticed in our board policy that it was our decision or the board's responsibility to review that amount and adjust it if they felt it needed to be, so I believe this has not been changed in how long, Ms. Mathis?
Not since I've been with the school system, which has been about 25 years.
So for 25 years, we've been charging the same amount, and I know that we all realize that cost of educating children have gone up drastically over the 25 years, and, you know, I don't know if 900's too low, but I do think that we need to look at that. I think that we need to look at some private schools in the area. I noticed we have a headmaster of a private school here tonight, we could, we could even ask him what their tuition is every year, but I do think that with our- with our policy to admit students to our, our system, that we stand a chance of possibly are setting the policy to, to let a lot of students come in, and I think that would be a good thing if they come in, but still, if we're going to use the money of Murfreesboro citizens to educate children who don't even live in our county, much less our city, I, I think that this would be an excellent opportunity for us to even get input from our stakeholders, our citizens who pay the taxes, about what they would think. Again, many of them don't even realize we charge tuition, or that county students, or out-of-county students are allowed to attend our system. I know there are some systems that don't even allow out-of-county students in their system. Uh, so I think we need to look at the, the amount, maybe talk to some other people, talk to some entities outside of our school district about this, maybe even speak to the council, Mr. Washington, about this item, since it does bring revenue into our system. And another thing I just wanted to warn us about was, when we have schools that offer special services, like our Discovery School, we have to remember that, that's almost a private school in itself when you talk, think about the services that are offered to those children, and if we have, you know, theoretically, right now, we could have the entire kindergarten class for that school filled up with students from out of our county at a very low cost to attend this wonderful school. So that was my position on that, and again, it was brought to me by several citizens who inquired about that, and I, I know after that happened, Ms. White, I, I started asking other people, that are citizens of Murfreesboro and taxpayers, and they were, I'd say, maybe one out of ten, and I asked a lot of people, one out of ten even knew that we received the tuition or allowed those students to come in. So it may be something we want to consider putting on our website. If you'll remember, we talked about putting questions out there. Maybe it could be, should we increase the tuition of the out-of-county students for Murfreesboro City Schools? And then they could just answer yes or no. I think that'd be a wonderful way to communicate and share with our stakeholders.
Are there any questions or comments from any other board members? Dr. Andrews and then Ms. Phillips.
I'd just like to make the comment that I don't have the information in front of me right now, but it's a pretty small issue. Um, it's, we, you know, the policy's been the same for quite some time, so I don't see a rush for people to bring their children all the way to Murfreesboro from outside of the county. Um, how many people were there, Ms. Mathis?
We had twenty-one out-of-county enrolled, and six of those children are teachers' children.
Okay, all right, and, and then I, I think that the, the net financial impact on the district was?
Our best estimate, Mr. Anderson computed this, that we do, because of twenty-one extra children, get extra revenue from the state, of course, in the amount of eighty-five thousand seventy-two dollars, and plus the revenue that we get for tuition from the children, which is eleven thousand seven hundred dollars. And then we did deduct from that some of the expenses that are direct expenses such as materials, because we're not actually hiring an additional teacher, we're not paying additional utilities, we don't have any kind of additional overheads such as extra principals or extra librarians or that sort of thing. So the net amount, a very, very conservative estimate, is we actually gain, because of having these students, ninety-three thousand dollars per year, and we didn't include in this the weighted full-time equivalent, eighty-eight that we actually received that would make our percent go up of the taxes, which might be another five thousand dollars, but we wanted to keep this a very conservative amount, so we do actually gain by having these students in our schools about ninety-three thousand. And I do want to address the point that we have not filled up the kindergarten, too. Dr. Buttram addressed the Discovery School. Two of the out-of-county children are at the Discovery School in kindergarten. We have one in first grade and one in fourth grade, and I have reviewed to make sure that they did not knock anybody out of a position by being there. We still actually have three spots left this year in kindergarten, because we did not have enough students to meet the criteria that we set to actually fill up all those slots, and the same for first grade, and my understanding, the same for fourth grade, so I would not want anybody to believe that we would deny a city child, if they met the criteria, at the Discovery School, a spot, and fill it with an out-of-county child.
No, I don't, Ms. White, ma'am?
Well, Mrs. Phillips, and then?
I wanted to just finish, can I finish?
Oh, I'm sorry, she didn't get finished.
Um, I just wanted to make the, the comment, sort of to finish, that these are good children and good families with good scores, they bring a lot to our school system, and I, I think they're, they're a benefit to our system, so I wouldn't want to do a lot to discourage them from coming, but I, you know, I certainly don't want to see all the children in Lebanon to come here. I don't think that's gonna happen, but I thank you very much, Ms. White.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips and then Dr. Buttram.
I had several points. First is, I just want to clarify for our audience at home watching, so what you're saying, Mrs. Mathis, is that these children coming in bring in a net gain to our system, a conservative estimate of about ninety-three thousand dollars.
That's correct.
And then the next thing is, it's about the suggestion that we put it on the website. I never have a, I never have a problem with getting input from our constituents. My only concern is if there's ever going to be an online question, that it be set up in such a way that, and I don't know if, I'm not technologically savvy enough to know if it can be set up in such a way, or how much trouble it is to set it up in such a way, that people are not allowed to go in and just repeatedly vote, 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 and that, because that, that's not gonna give you any kind of, of a clear idea of public sentiment. So it's what I call the American Idol syndrome, where you just call, 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 call. So, anyway, the, so, you know, my, my feeling is that, right now, the population is so low, basically, I'm thinking of it as fifteen children, if you're not counting the children of the teachers from out of county, and, and if it's not broken, why fix it? If suddenly we see busloads of kids being carted in from, from out of county, maybe then it's time to, to look at it, but when we think that these children are bringing us in ninety-three thousand dollars to our system by having them here, and that's a net gain after you subtract their expenses to the system, and we're only talking fifteen out of, what is our population today?
Sixty-nine-hundred-two students.
Well, I'm, I'm taking away the six that belong to teachers, I mean, the six.
Oh, I'm sorry, of the out-of-county.
Six belong to teachers. Six of those children are teachers' children.
So fifteen?
So fifteen is what I'm thinking.
I didn't hear that part, I'm sorry.
You know, I just, I just think that as a public relations, a public relations issue, it, I don't, would not want it to backfire, suddenly charging more money. You know, I would not want that to backfire, and, but I, but again, I think the percentage is so low of children from out of county that it's, you know, the point is, at this time, moot.
Buttram?
Well, again, I, I don't agree that the point is moot, because a citizen actually asked me about this, Ms. Phillips, and whether a citizen chooses to go onto the line and vote one time or a hundred times, it's, that's their right, and I don't think we can not share information with them just because someone on the board might be afraid of having an answer come back that they don't necessarily like.
Excuse me, Dr. Buttram?
Ms. Mathis, let me finish. Go ahead.
And, uh, in reference to what Ms. Mathis said earlier, it's not the, it's not the policy, or it's not the Discovery School, um, policy that I was questioning, and again, it was the policy of, for the board to be able to increase the tuition if they so choose.
Okay.
Ms. Phillips, and then, uh, Ms. Campbell?
I do believe I need to clarify for you, Dr. Buttram, that I am never opposed to the public having information, nor am I afraid of any kind of information being shared with our, our school system that is accurate and true.
Uh, Mr. Campbell?
Several years ago, uh, we didn't, we did not, or we did, charge people from outside the city?
We did, two hundred dollars per family.
Okay, and then that was increased to nine hundred?
No. We're talking about out-of-city versus out-of-county. We chart, we, there, there are two groups of people here. We have a five-hundred-sixty-one out-of-city students, and then we have twenty-one out-of-county, out of Rutherford County. So for a long time, I don't really know how long, we did charge the out-of-city students a two-hundred-dollar-per-family tuition, and then that was done away with, as Dr. Buttram referenced a while ago, and then we did not do away with the out-of-county tuition of nine hundred per family. Yes, sir.
Certainly, I'm appreciative to the comments and the question that arose out of this discussion, and, Mr. Hopper, you have a question?
Uh, I may be wrong, but as I recall, uh, I'm not sure it was with you, Ms. Mathis, or not, but I had a meeting with the mayor and the city manager, and the out-of-county tuition was raised slightly at that time, and as I recall, I think the thought was that they, we would kind of estimate what an average homeowner would pay in real estate taxes, and I believe that's how we arrived at the nine hundred dollar per student, so if these out-of-county parents lived in Murfreesboro, they would be paying city taxes of approximately nine hundred dollars. So the city was being compensated for, in that manner, so I think that the taxpayers need to be aware that these, we do have fifteen students who are not teachers' children that are attending the city's schools, and if need be, I'll read the, there's two at Black Fox, there's one at Bradley, there's four at Casey and Lane, there's two at Ermasse Eagle, there's three at Hobgood, there's one at Mitchell-Nelson Primary, there's one at Northfield, there's four at Discovery School, and three at Scales. As far as I know, there are seats available without overcrowding or taking the children's spaces there, and by having the services already being provided, if you have a vacant seat, you aren't getting the revenue from the state, where if we have these people coming to our system and aren't overcrowding us, and we have space for them, then the school system realizes extra revenue. So with that explanation, the mayor and city manager were comfortable, and I have been to City Hall on many occasions asking for money for the school board, and I assure you that they take all of this very seriously, and I assure you, you don't want to go to ask for money. But anyway, I, I feel comfortable with what we're doing. I'd like for people to understand and know what we're doing, and I'm glad we can answer the questions for people who might be asking about it. It's nice for them to know.
Ms. White?
Yes, sir.
I, I like Mr. Hopper's idea about the, maybe if we could find out what the average tax homeowner in Murfreesboro City pays, just on the average, what would be their property tax, and maybe bring, bring that back to the board and see how close we are, if that's how they calculated this number.
The portion that goes toward education, is that what you want?
No, I'd like to know, I think that Mr. Hopper said, was it the average tax, city tax that the homeowner paid, Mr. Hopper?
That goes toward education, let's watch, let's study it then.
I would have to try to recall exactly. I remember that conversation with the mayor and the, and the city manager, and I, I would just have to, I don't recall closely more definitely than.
All right. Ms. Campbell?
It should not be difficult to find out the answer to both questions, what the average homeowner is paying in taxes, and then when you find that, you're gonna find out what opportunity is going to education, so you get one, you get them both.
Are there any other questions?
Well, there, there is a ramification other than just what the city, what those people are paying to the, because we're getting money from the state.
Yeah.
To, to pay for, uh, pay for those children, too.
But I think where he was coming from was that, when you said that it was based on the average tax, so we get, if we get, if I know how much you're paying in property tax, I know how much of that's going to education. So one figure, do it all.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion, Ms. White, ma'am?
Is there any more discussion, or anything anybody would like to ask? And we will entertain a motion?
Um, in the interest, so that parents can know what to expect over the next year, I'd like to move that we leave tuition where it is for out-of-county students.
Is there a second?
I think they need to know. I'll second the motion.
We've had a motion and a second. Uh, Ms. Ridley, did you get that?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Would you call the role, Ms. Ridley?
What about discussion?
No, no, back up, question.
So, why wouldn't we wait to get the answer to these questions that might cause us to increase, or possibly to decrease? I don't understand why we need to make a motion tonight, and can we do that now, Ms., Dr. Andrews?
It was on the agenda to talk about it, so...
Yeah, but it's not, it's not an action item, is it?
It's not listed under action items, but the board at any point can make a motion to, to, to decide items.
We, okay, I thought earlier, Dr. Andrews said something about the agenda and not being able to do something, but...
That's for the consent agenda.
Okay.
They're different, yeah.
Let me say this before you speak, Mr. Campbell. I think we, as board members, have big hearts, we're very concerned about the economy, what's happening to parents, and the situation that we're in right now, so I think, and I'm hoping that's why Dr. Andrews made the motion, I'm hoping that's why Dr. Buttram is looking into it for future years, but I don't want any parents tonight, or teachers that are listening to have children in our system, to feel like we're trying to shove another burden on them. That's not what we're doing tonight. We're just in the wholesome discussion, there's a motion on the table, but first, let, Mr. Campbell?
I'd like for us to, to wait, when is this, March, April? If parents know by April whether or not that is going to increase from nine hundred or decrease, it's not gonna make that much difference. But I really and truly think that before we put something in concrete tonight, that if, if it is a matter of concern, and everybody just about has, has had a comment, one more month is not gonna make any difference, I don't think, because it's, it's not gonna take but one phone call, I don't think, to call the city government and the tax people and find out how, what the average property tax is, and then if education is getting seventy-five percent, then if it's a thousand dollars, then you know, seven hundred and fifty is going to education, and bingo.
I have a question, please. I know we don't wait till the last minute to make or send out any information for parents on when the tuition is due, or whether or not they're planning to return to the school system. That's just a question I have. Have we sent out anything, have we done anything for the parents at the schools that are affected with this tuition for the next school year? Have we sent out?
Yes, we have, and as you all recall, I, I shared with you some minutes reflecting comments that Dr. Clark made as far as that school. She had all her plans in place, and you had asked then, Mrs. White, that we wait until the 2009, 2010 school year to make any decision on any tuition changes because of plans that parents might have made, and we had included in the packet sent to you the list of enrollment events, and basically, we have put newspaper ads in for all the schools that would accept out-of-city, out-of-county, and that it's basically, any assignment is made based on space available. And, of course, we did announce our tuition amount of nine hundred dollars per family for out-of-county.
All righty. Uh, Dr., Ms. Duggan and then Dr. Andrews?
I would just like to ask if Dr. Andrews would consider amending her motion to say for the 2009, 2010 school year, and then it can be addressed again during next school year if we feel like it needs to be.
Um, I, I can comment on that. We could do that. We could do that. I feel like a month is a long time for a parent who, who hasn't been worried up to this point, and may become worried now. I also feel like there's not, there's not a large, it's a very low, very, very low percentage of our budget that we're talking about. We've spent a lot of time discussing it, and I, you know, I don't think what we're going to hear from the city is going to, you know, that may have been the way the decision was made back then, but, you know, when it comes down to it, we just decide, okay, is this fair, is this reasonable? Are we getting, getting way too many children because it's so, so cheap? Are we not getting any because it costs too much? I feel like we're at a comfortable spot with it, so I'd rather not have to go through this again every year. I'd like to talk about, I'd like to spend our time talking about what's, what's helping our teachers in the classroom, what's making our schools work, you know, where can we come up with the money to get the programs going that will help us be a success? So I guess I'd just sort of like to see us get this resolved and, and move on to things that I see as being quite important. But I, you know, I can, I can accept that, I'd rather not, but if that would help us move on tonight, I guess I can accept that. Anyone, my second, have a feeling on that?
There's one more question.
Oh, okay.
Mrs. Phillips?
This may not seem pertinent, but how much is the cost of a bus?
About 80, 80 to 100,000.
So when I see that $93,000, I see that pays for a bus, and that's what I thought it was, you know, I mean, not that we're going to buy a bus, but I'm just, I'm just thinking, what will that $93,000 purchase for our kids?
But I'm thinking about the difference between what we might charge, you know, if we charge $1,000 next year, it's not going to be, it's not going to make a huge difference in our budget. It might make a fairly big difference to those families. If we double it, that will make a huge difference to some, some families. Were you my second?
I was.
You were?
I don't care to change my second.
I guess I'll just leave it where it is, then Ms. Duggan, but I appreciate that, not a bad idea.
There is a mo...
Ms. Wade? But we could, I mean, next year, if we decide to increase or lower the tuition, we could, we could do that. So, I mean, once, if we set it tonight, it's not set forever, it's not set for one year. I think that's the board's responsibility to review its policies every year, and it said make that decision. So I wanted to make that clear.
Dr. Andrews? What would, if you don't mind, restate your motion. What was your motion?
I move that we leave out-of-county tuition at $900 per family per year.
And the second, Ms. Ridley, call the roll.
Dr. Buttram?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Ms. Mathis?
Yes, just to have some information for you on personnel update. We do not have any information report on our 90-day people, but behind tab four, just wanted to keep you informed of those teachers who have been recommended for advancement to a professional license. And this will be upon completion of the 2008, '09 school year. There's no approval, it's just for your information to keep you aware. Next would be your monthly...
Just make a comment? Nancy usually does this, ma'am, make the comment, just congratulations to these teachers who've gotten their professional license. It's just, it's a big step, they've worked hard to get where they are, they really have.
Very definitely. And behind tab five, we'll find our monthly revenue and expenditure report. This shows us through 67% of the budget year. And we're still showing a negative amount of $166,000. Actually, the city is slightly behind on its allocation, just the way we have it recorded. And had we gotten that extra $400,000, we would be in black. And I know that would make Mr. Hopper very happy to see that. So we're doing quite well, and thanks to Gary and everybody working with him, making sure that we are keeping our expenditures in check, and our revenue is still coming in pretty much on target. And your last report is your attendance report, behind tab six, this is for your sixth month of attendance. We have 6,902 students in K through six, and this is an increase of 10 over last month. So after having an increase of 27 last month, we increased another 10 this month, so we do continue to grow. And in addition to our K through six students, we have 368 pre-K children, for a total enrollment of 7,270 students. And those are all the reports.
We're down to other business? Is there anything?
Is this where we write the ask for next meeting?
Yes, sir.
I would like for us to, I'd like to request that we put the Jameson subdivision item on the agenda as an action item next month.
I'm going to make a special meeting with just Mr. Campbell and I to talk about it. I'm trying to, under other business, the only thing about this is, we just finished with rezoning. We're not into rezoning right now. We're finished with rezoning. Now, if you'd like to do some more rezoning, I think that's when we can add rezoning back to other business. But right now, we've rezoned two schools. This was not one of the spots that we rezoned. We have already previously rezoned Jameson Place. And, Mr. Campbell, I just don't know, and I just don't know how to, whether we want to get back into rezoning again. We're not into rezoning anymore, and I hope I've got this right, but I thought that we were finished with rezoning unless we build another school. And we had rezoned Jameson Place a good while ago. And if you get back into rezoning, we're going to have to open this up to every street and subdivision we've rezoned in the last two, three, or four years. And I don't think, I can't speak to anybody but myself, but I can't imagine revisiting all those neighborhoods again, when we're not even into rezoning. I'd like for you to think about it, and, because I can't imagine what more we could say or do to the subdivision, other than we're just not into rezoning. And that is a rezoning issue.
So are you, are you telling me we're not going to put it on the agenda?
We'll put it down, Ms. Mathis, and I'll get with Mr. Campbell and talk about this. Thank you. Is there anything else anybody would like to put under other business for next month? Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to request that we go ahead and start looking at dates for maybe a day-and-a-half retreat, because even like the rezoning issue, I feel like that, I for one wish we could have had more in-depth conversations about the rezoning. And that's not to say that we, you know, that Mr. Anderson, he did a great job with, you know, preparing the plaits and showing us all that. But I would, I would personally have liked to have had more discussion with the board on some of those issues. But I would like to, for us to go ahead and start maybe looking at some dates for a retreat.
So you're thinking of a day-and-a-half retreat? So, because that could go on the agenda?
Ms. Mathis, would you please? Thank you.
And Ms. Wade, I have a request for a report. I would like to have a report on our homeless population and what we're doing with them. I know we, we've identified several children. I think if, many of you have, may have heard this week, that the federal government has offered a stimulus package specifically for identified homeless children. I'd like to know if we apply for the McKinney-Vento Act monies, you know, just a report, maybe have Candy Clifford come in and talk to us about the programs where she's serving those children. Because I know we, we have a lot of those children identified in our system, and that would be something I think our citizens would like to see, how we're working with them.
So basically, you're asking for a report from Ms. Clifford?
From Ms. Clifford on the, our homeless children, and then maybe possibly Ms. Kaminsky on the McKinney-Vento monies, and the stimulus money for, that I think is for this year, actually, depending on how many students have been identified.
Is there any other business for next month's agenda? Saying none, is there a motion to adjourn?
You can just call it.
So moved.
You can just do it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. The meeting is adjourned.